...of the United States of America and the Republic of British Commons, one nation, one ground, individual liberty and justice for all.
...of the Human Home Foods, state main CDVG program for economic development grant application.
Alright, so Healing Home Foods has submitted a grant application for CDVG funding. This is a state program for economic development to help promote business growth. The town's involvement in this is that the town acts as somewhat of a pass-through, if you will, managing the funds, but the funds do come from the economic development program from the state. And then being a business that's growing and locating here in the town of Oxford, this is just something to help the town, help business grow, and as well as job growth and the number of jobs in town. So, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add or discuss with this, but we have a copy of their letter of intent here which will be submitted to the state economic development office after this meeting.
Can you relax? Questions? No, the hearing closed. Actions on the minutes, June 2nd.
Would you do accept?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Adjustments to the agenda?
Add nothing, sir.
Public comment? Business items, to elect a chair and a vice-chair. I'd like to nominate Sharon Jackson. I believe that it's quite reasonable to have one selectman every year, be a chair, to find out what it's take. And that's why I've named her chair. Very good, hope we have.
Second, in and of second.
All in favor? Let your people for questions.
Mama.
Do we have...
No. You can have this. I'll keep it first.
Okay.
Mama.
So the next agenda item is to nominate a vice-chair. All votes in favor? Thank you. This is item 5.2, police chief position.
Alright, so I'm very excited to announce today that we did have a hiring process for the police chief's position. Received candidates from both outside and internally. And after going through the process, Ricky Jack is the one that was definitely by far the preferred candidate and definitely the most qualified. So I'm here to announce that Ricky Jack is going to be the Oxford's police chief moving forward. I was hoping that not only to have a time to congratulate him and also say that I'm really excited and looking forward to working with you in this position, but I also have your chief of police rank insignia and badge as well. I've spoken to your wife and we were gonna... And you, if you would be kind enough to step up in front of everybody.
I find it very quickly, going through this process, the past few weeks, the amount of support that I've gotten through the community has been very humbling for this. So I appreciate all of that from everybody, and I really look forward to working with everybody on the board, enjoy all of you and have a lot of respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say that I started working here in 1997 and did work with Ricky at that time until I left in 2005, and I can't think of the finer person to be, or she.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Business item 5.4, reappointment of Joseph Wax for the Budget Committee.
So, second.
Discussion, all votes in favor, proposed. Business item 5.4, reappointment of Alexandra Luke for the Budget Committee.
So, second.
Discussion, all votes in favor, proposed. Thank you. Item 5.5, appointment of Chris Bellado as alternate code enforcement officer, plumbing inspector.
So, second.
Discussion, all votes in favor, proposed. Thank you. Item 5.6, Oxford Historical Society petition lair fee to discuss before it's closed.
In your packets, she supplied you with a couple of new pieces of information. I provided those to you so that you have the diagrams and such, the markups.
I actually wrote down what I wanted to say so I could be clear about my point and get them across. So here to talk to you about the Pigeon Hill Schoolhouse. It's the last standing original schoolhouse that exists in Oxford. So from there, you can read whatever. Perhaps that building in our local town is fondly remembered by many of us through the stories told by us of the one-room schoolhouse. Most of us have spent 12 or more years in the classroom, in the hallways of a public school, and some were lucky enough to enjoy the space in the one-room schoolhouse by our relatives. Schoolhouses were much more than just a building. Education back in those days, for those who weren't able to attend, was a choice between education and fortitude and farming. They also became the playgrounds where we played, and the athletic fields where we contributed to our neighborhoods and our culture. The history of the Oxford schoolhouses also has a presidential significance. The 14th president of the United States, Franklin Pence, was once a teacher in the Caldwell District Schoolhouse, which was once located in East Oxford but tragically burned in 1959. Franklin Pence was a classmate to a local Oxford man, being at Caldwell at Golden College, and reportedly came to live with Caldwell's family in Oxford while teaching here during his stay. Other local residents, John J Perry and Sullivan Polo, were also among his pupils at the school already started. As it relates to the one-room schoolhouse, which brought me here according to today, which is now located on Pigeon Hill, right across from the casino, that building was built in 1867. It continued to serve the children and employed our teachers until as late as 1940. According to the historical records found at the society, the last teacher reported to a top gear was Barbara Elliott in the winter and summer terms of 1940. After 1940, the school was closed, and land in the schoolhouse was eventually sold to Evan Thurlow in 1951. The contents of the school and the original school depths are now located in the museum at Oxford. Evan Thurlow, the local farmer, school bus driver along with his wife, and of which many of you are familiar, served in this town for 39 years after his death. Many remember the big yellow school buses that lined the front of the Thurlow farm atop of Pigeon Hill as well. Moreover, his daughter, Sandra, as many of our new generation of children came to know her as their teacher at the Oxford Elementary School. Sandra and the Thurlow family, who clearly understood the importance of education through the years of dedication to the school of Oxford, have now graciously offered the building to the Oxford Historical Society and that hopes we can preserve it. However, the schoolhouse now needs to be moved from its present location, as the land is now under contract for sale and will be torn down by the developer if it is not saved. The Oxford Historical Society, who has long served the town of Oxford in its efforts to preserve Oxford's unique history, fear that if this last remaining schoolhouse is torn down, its history will be gone forever. We also strongly believe that this schoolhouse represents a critical link to our town's multi-faceted collective history, and we hope you will agree with us as well. Moreover, of the 13 schools built in the town of Oxford, the Pigeon Hill Schoolhouse is the last building standing as it was originally designed. Of the others remaining, such as the building we are standing in today, have either been destroyed by fire, torn down, remodeled into an outdoor apartment, or are now up for sale. The schoolhouse, in its current condition, definitely needs some work, but we, the society, believe it is worthy of preservation. Grants are available for our reach for preservation such as for such a building of this unique character, and can be found through the National Trust of Historic Preservation for nonprofits and public agencies. In addition, there is historic grants, along with the state-aid Historic Preservation Commission, and the Save America Treasure Grants, who offer grants to assist saving old schools just to name a few. We believe by saving the school in a long-term way, we are asking to move it to the K House property, which is a town-owned property, which will allow the community to appreciate its significance, use it in the future as a cultural and educational history center, and more importantly, save the school in all that represents as an important part of the area's history. And the stories told by our local grandmothers, grandfathers, and greats that attended the school will be made all the later. Additionally, I will be reaching out to the newly-formed Town Historic Preservation Committee to support us in our efforts to place this remaining schoolhouse on the state-aid local register and see it protected as a valuable resource. Finally, as the president of the Oxford Historical Society, I ask the board of selectmen who represent its people in the town of Oxford to have forward vision, along with the society, in helping us to save this 155-year-old schoolhouse. By allowing us to move it to the K House or even to another town-owned piece of property, I believe it will serve our community as a place to look back in time at how far we'd have come in the town of Oxford and save a precious ours back from the fate of those of our historic sites who have now been eliminated, torn down, and just may not exist. Based on the diagram that you have, and after a discussion with the town code enforcement officer recently, we believe the building needs all setback requirements allowing it to be placed at the K House Museum, and I hope you will.
So is there going to be any town funding for this project, and will you be asking the town for any funds for this project?
We are. We are going to do fundraising, to restore the building, we're going to be applying for grants. We wanted to pass this first hurdle with the town to be sure that we have a place to even put the building before we go down the road of, you know, seeing, you know, moving, actually moving it, and then the next steps from there. We're happy to, you know, to continue the work that the town wants to see, you know, keep them actively involved in that process, or even if you have ideas, maybe that, you know, what the town thinks should happen to it. It's just a shame, I mean, it's just, we have seen so, you know, I recently came to the town and asked to create a historic preservation committee within the town in order to save some of these precious buildings that we have that are just gone. People say, "Oh, I remember when," and we have pictures, but we don't actually have buildings, so...
The other question I have is, how long would you anticipate that building would actually sit there before any work? Because in all reality, it's not a very nicely-looking building.
It's, I'm sorry?
It's not a very nice-looking building. I mean, it looks like an old, it's an old building, gray and everything, so to sit it right there in the village is going to be a nice one, I think. So how long would you anticipate before anything is done?
We, you know, we will actively get, you know, the timeline as quickly as possible. And again, I don't have a timeline. The best thing I could offer is that we continue to work with the town in our efforts to let you know what, how the progress is going, and as to whether we are actually going to be able to move the building and those steps necessary to get to that point, but it's all in planning. I probably will actually, we got a timeline for you.
We have to have a town meeting to see if we could set that up properly?
I would think that the board of selectmen, you guys can accept donations, this is what it would be. Is this being donated to the...
It's being donated by the Thurlow family to the Oxford Historical Society.
But you're not the town?
Correct. So we could alter that, I mean, however, you know, it could be, the same as the K House. The K House originally came into existence, as some may recall, that it was from the K family, the heirs of the K's, that thought it would be a great place to have a museum. It stores all, as most people don't know, it stores all of Oxford's history. And we have a great museum over there, we upkeep it, we're constantly adding to our collections. And that was accepted by the town as a donation for the purpose of a museum as well as to be used by the Historic Society.
Accepted by the town, but was it the town voters that accepted it?
I...
So, in order for the town, and I believe this is accurate, in order for the town to acquire any land or buildings, it requires the vote of the legislative body. The selectmen cannot approve that. If it's donated to you and the Historical Society, that's one thing, but it would require voting, people, if it's donated to the town.
I think it's important to be part of the history, you know, so to me, it isn't really a matter of whether it's the Oxford Historical Society or the town. I'm here to entertain the purpose of speaking, however, however, whatever, however that happens, I mean, what we can do to do that.
Do you know what timeline on when that building needs to be moved by?
So, in speaking with, so there was some misunderstanding, because I'm not sure, many of you recall Joe Casanova was working on a deal back in the day in the casino and still to try to move the building at that time. But if we weren't, the society wasn't included in that discussion with the developers. So they, the Thurlow family, were under the impression that they had already given it to us. And only until recently, there was an article I found this year in 15, where it talked about the land being for sale up there at the Thurlow farm, and then mostly it is now on contract. And I, they wanted a time as well as to when we thought we would be able to move it, we don't have a place to put it yet, so I told them that I would be coming here to discuss it, and I had to give them that. So I'm thinking we would probably be able to do it, or it would be 90 days, or, I'm sure they don't want to hold up their sale, so. I don't know how quickly the process, I'm not familiar with town processes.
They tell me, they don't have anything scheduled, or tell me to know.
Would you like me to double-check to see if we would need permission from a legal perspective to place something on town property like that? I'd like to double-check for...
Right, hope the next one would be in November, but you could also have a special town meeting at that same time.
I think they have a special town meeting, I should have, more than just what they're discussing.
I will follow up with legal and get a quick legal opinion on that, I mean, it should be pretty straightforward. And then what I'll do is, I'll have this as an agenda item on the next meeting with that, so that we can...
At least a yes or no.
Yeah.
You know, as to whether we can try to move forward or not, so...
Would you not ask the town to pay for the...
We're not.
You're just asking, would you care if you put it on that piece pro?
That's right. Thank you.
Yep. Alright, so, since town meeting, I've been continuing to move forward with, move forward with the purchase course with the new town office building on Otter Road. And where we are with that is moving forward with the bond paperwork. In your packets, I have included the resolution authorizing the bond itself, so this is for us to start the paperwork with the attorney and the bond manager and so forth. What you have in your packets, it basically goes over that we're looking to finance $750,000 for the purchase of the building. It outlines that the select board chose option A from the Anderson Scott Bank, and what that is, is that, let me get on that. Option A was the 10-year term, 3.2 financing, first payment $92,505, with no fees. So if the board is agreeable to that, I have this ready to sign, and we pass it around the warrants, and we have reflected it so that it shows Chair Jackson to be the chair. So I'll just leave that signed, and then I can send it back to the attorney. If you guys can do, it'd be great if you could do a motion accepting that document.
What we can do is...
Question?
The option A, what is going to be, what happened yesterday with the interest rates? Is that going to change?
No, these interest rates, we're locked in for now. I don't remember the end date, but we're locked in for a little while here, so, yeah. Thanks again, Jake.
Thank you very much.
Do you want us to give town managers a report, and then we do the police department reports?
He just wanted an opportunity to say his words, which he's done, so I think we're, I think we're good, thank you.
He's a man of few words.
Yes. Alright, so the first 7.1 is King Street Sidewalk update. I just wanted to let folks know that the company looks like they're going to get ready to start on June 20th. If anything changes, they will, Rob, through the engineer, will let us know. So just wanted the board and the public to know, King Street sidewalks, June 20th. Then the next thing is, back to the town office, 7.2. So I just wanted to share with the board where my head was at, and kind of share some timelines and thoughts. I've been working with the town attorney, as well as the seller's attorney, the hospital, on getting the purchase and sale agreement finalized. There's nothing crazy there, it's just making sure that we're all on the same page. We're looking also, working with the town attorney to complete the bonding financing. We're doing the first step with the declaration tonight. She told me on the phone today, Alyssa Tibbetts, that Monday, Tuesday, she should have anything completed, and I believe that I'll have further paperwork for you folks to sign at the next meeting. She feels the closing for the bonding should be able to take place within 30 to 45 days. I'm going to do my best to try and also line up the real estate part of the closing with that as well. I've been working with Harriman, the architect that the town contracted with, to build the new town office. We have rediverted, and he is drafting new contract agreements to help us with the remodeling design. We've had a couple of meetings since then. I'll use the word, bringing in things, a little bit has been done, so we're a little bit more on the same page. I've asked him to do things in phases, and so we can kind of take a hell of a hard approach, you know, with the priorities and funding that we have. My plan is to get things together in a nice, you know, cohesive package, if you will, and then bring it to the board so we can do a workshop and look at at least somewhere to start, because I'm sure that you folks will have thoughts and input and stuff that you'd like in there as well. And then, once the board of selectmen, you know, once we're all on the same page, move forward with putting bid documents together. I would like all of this stuff, if possible, to happen as quickly as possible, so once we close, we can be going out to, going out to bid for whatever level of remodeling that we're going to do. And also, once we close, I'm hoping to be able to start moving, you know, documents and storage, and that kind of, to start this process so that by the end of hopefully September, maybe we can be up there. So, that's where my head's at with this piece of it, so I wanted to share that. Also, 7.3, town meeting election review, I just wanted to say that from my perspective, I thought town meeting went well. I was really excited, there was over 100 people there, if I'm not mistaken, which is really great, especially compared to last year. They did walk out of there, though, with, I feel like, as the manager, I'm going to be bringing up the zoning ordinance and talking about marijuana businesses, the number of businesses in town, I think we should have a conversation about that. And also, I think further conversations should happen regarding the food pantry. So for those that were at town meeting that have interest in that, I would just ask that they keep their ears open for further conversation with the board and manager coming up here shortly. And then lastly, and I'll stop docking, the revaluation update, today, I met with KRT Appraisals. They are planning on, at the end of this month, getting started with their fieldwork. They have provided, which I've given to the board, just samples of their public notices. They're going to be sending out postcards, if you will, to the neighborhoods that they're going to work, and start working in, and that'll give, you know, public notification to those folks. And that'll give, you know, public notification to those folks. They're also going to be doing a press release, which the board has. That press release just kinda goes over the, you know, the intricacies of what they're gonna be doing. All of this stuff, once I get the final draft from KRT, we put on the website as well for folks to be able to reference. So we're moving along with that as well, and that's all I have.
Selecting items.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. The holiday on Monday, um, is that something that we're gonna have to put into the policy?
Do you keep?
Yeah.
Uh, that's something that we do, meaning the board and the manager, need to discuss. And we're working on union negotiations right now, and I figure once we get the other side of that, that would be a good time to address the personnel policy.
Other, any comments?
One thing, maybe, uh, when you highway crews out, walking, riding around, if you come out, can come up, uh, the, uh, street by the Welchville School there, where you come out and hit, uh, right here by the gas plant, or the fuel gas plant, we get where the more road. You come out of there, there's a couple pine trees right there. They're just little scrub pine trees, but more than once, I have traveled that road pretty regularly, and I've had somebody right in the middle of the road there and they can't see ya. If, if you're coming up, you know, in near defense, if you're coming up that road and you look to your left, you can't see around it, 'cause you're right in the road.
So can they trim them off, do you think?
I think you trim them off. Uh, you, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. You do too. Yeah, you, you, 'cause you're right in the road and, and, uh, more than once, not myself, but other people do, you know, I've seen them come right out in front of you, so.
Jackson, Dakota. Kill him.
I would just like to thank all the citizens for reelection, who need to deserve to be a child.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sign warrants.
Long and rocky, cut you off, pretty deep, very far to sleep and chill, the end of that scenario.
Bamboo?
Whatever it is. It's growing again. You can't see up here, you can't see over there. It's just a trunk of, you need corn.
Is there something you can find that?
Yes.
Could it kill them? Oh, I mean, we got so much growing everywhere because on both sides of roads, when you hit bamboo, every little piece, you carry it, it's kind of bad. It kills the new.
Well, that sounds horrible. It's like cancer. Once you hit it on your wheels, it spreads on your arm, you know. But I'll, uh, I'll bring it up to Jim about what Floyd was mentioning as well as the aspect of it as well.
Well, while they're there, I think, turn that, 'cause then we're looking at these socks, or did you get a hit on them?
Yeah, I don't do, yeah.
Even that, he loves it.
Your whole, I'm sure you definitely don't know the word on the timer, or whatever.
I have to be right by my house.
I don't know what come down.
It's pretty nice to hear a return of authority.
That's good.
Motion to accept, uh, the sign warrants, one thirty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty.
Thank you.
Anyone in favor? Except for, do I have to, I can discuss the personnel matters to the MRS, the title of the chapter, thirteen section four of five.
For a vote, would anybody like to, uh, record a statement on Ricky? Anyone want to make a statement about Ricky?
Um, do you have one I said earlier?
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll send you some.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, I can send you some good good luck. Thanks for coming.
Bye.